Planning Commission meeting. And the first order of business will be to consider approval of the Planning Commission minutes from the December 10th meeting. Entertain a motion for approval. So move.
Second.
And a second by Seltzer. Any discussion on the minutes? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you very much. And then we have Council Representative report. Other person Bartlet, did you have anything to add?
Not much. You'll see in the status developments, we're talking about opening, well, work is starting, breaking ground on the new hotel. I think April now, they asked for, they just extend their permit out there, so they'll be breaking ground on that. So that already came through, but Kettle Park West are talking about more housing, so if they, if that moves forward, still a lot of negotiations going on, exactly what they're gonna do, but maybe seeing that in the upcoming year, so they know. But other than that, they approved, the council approved the extraterritorial jurisdictional recommendations you made last council meeting, your last Planning Commission meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And it takes us to staff reports, and Michael will be doing that tonight.
Yeah, in your packet, as usual, the status of developments is listed. If you have any questions, I can certainly try to answer them for you.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Here none. Takes us to item number five, which is a request by Mackenzie Cervace for a conditional use permit to allow a group daycare and preschool at 1940 Jackson Street. Do you wanna kind of fill us in, or should we just go into the public hearing and?
Yeah, I'd just say that, that the applicant called me late last week and said she wanted it moved, removed from the agenda, so the public hearing still has to go on, and after that, we'll just close that item.
So what we'll do is we'll close our regular meeting and then reopen for the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on that issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and then reopen the regular meeting. And then, I guess we don't really, do we take action, or would we?
I don't think so.
Just a quick question, is she abandoning the project?
She didn't say. She just wanted to remove.
At this point, we don't really have a recommendation that we can give the council, so I guess we can just let it.
Do we need to table until they come back? Give her if they do, or?
We could do that. That's, that's an option if you'd like.
Motion to table, until what, until they request to put it back on the agenda again.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Actually, you can't table, discuss the table, can you? Okay. So then we'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor of the, all those approving to table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right. And then the next item would be number six, and that would be the proposed ordinance amendment to section 78 dash 206, parent eight, parent Y, keeping the chickens. Do you have any overview on this one before we open up the public hearing?
Yeah, I think you, you guys knew this was coming back. I think you requested it, so it's coming back to change the, the number of hens from four to six. And the requister is in the audience if, if any questions.
Do you wanna start conversation, or would you rather go into public hearing first?
Oh, just, if I could.
Sure.
We have item six and item seven. Item six is referring, is ordinance, zoning ordinance change. Item seven is an ordinance change. It's, to me, it seems to be redundant. What I would like to do is to move on the zoning ordinance, which is the 78 dash 206, parent eight, parent Y, and remove and abandon the keeping of animals, which is item seven. That's six dash two, parent B, because of the redundancy.
So that's a motion? Or you wanna talk about first?
I think, I think what I'll do is I'll just save the motion to when we get to item seven, to remove it.
Okay. And is there a reason why we have two of them, or that's just? I'm not sure why hens was ever added to keeping of animals, but it can certainly be removed when we get there.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments before we go into the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close our regular meeting and we'll reopen for public hearing. And there's some people here, did you wanna speak to this topic? If you could just come up to the podium here, it looks like we have your information, so thank you, you can introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Whitner. I've lived in Stoughton for sixteen, almost seventeen years. We got chickens the first time, the first year that you allowed them. We have, my family has a ton of allergies, so we can't have cats and dogs, so we have chickens. I also have a child with a rare, like, he's the only one in the world metabolic disorder. And so we started gardening at the city garden and doing our own chickens, 'cause the more organic, the better, and the stuff that we buy at the grocery store, he really gets sick from. And we've had four chickens. We're on our, like, third batch. We get Rhode Island red chickens, and Rhode Island red chickens, they grow really big and fast, and they're lovely, but really, when they get about four years old, they get, their eggs get so big that they kind of get egg bound. And so I've had a couple of, a couple die because they've gotten egg bound. I've had my dad come and take them and off them, so we can get new groups. But it's hard, the, the number of four is hard, 'cause really, the least you can get from a hatchery is three. And that whole chicken, or the order of the chickens, that kind of is a real thing. So you can't just, like, get another chick to fill in a spot. So I have five people in my family, three teenagers, one that's a sick one that needs to eat our food for the most part, and this last fall, one of my chickens that are prime, right in lay, egg laying range, got his beheaded by a hawk. So now I'm down to three, and they're molting, so now I'm only getting about one or two eggs a day. So he gets those eggs, we've been buying other eggs from the grocery store. We have a coop, which, when you look at the coops of the people around Stoughton, sorry, my color printer wouldn't work. My coop is built for twelve. We'll never have twelve. But we, it would be nice to have six, because right now I'm at three, which means that next spring, I can get three more. And at least then I'm getting, on average, about as many eggs as people in my family. We travel a lot to Europe, and when we travel, my neighbors fight over who gets to take care of my chickens. Because when you take care of chickens, you get the eggs. So we give a lot of eggs to the neighbors, and they come over and look at the chickens and collect the eggs and go home, so they're really, they're really wonderful, so. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And is anybody else here to speak, speak on this issue tonight? All right. Did you wanna speak on it, or you want me to close and then we go into deliberation?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen for our regular business, and all the Commissioner Seltzer.
Thank you. I'd, I'd just like to say, you know, I did read all that over and tried to figure it all out, and it makes a lot of sense, and I can't see that anybody's being hurt by it, especially the buying and selling when something happens to one of the chickens. So I don't really see any reason to question it, nor unless somebody says there's been a lot of complaints about chickens, I think this is a very good proposal, and we should just go ahead with it.
Should I make a motion on that?
I move to do so.
I'll second that.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this one? Other person Bartlet.
Yes, I did ask, ask the chief about it, just to see, 'cause I hadn't heard any complaints, and he said there've been no issues to date, so there's no reason, I see not to allow it, but, so, that's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? I guess the only question I had, Michael, was, I mean, you, you have to go out and inspect.
Yep.
Do you anticipate having more chickens would change anybody else's chicken coop, or are they all big enough to?
No, that's, that's fine. We have very few problems, problems with, with these issues out there, so, okay, I don't see any issues.
All right. Anybody else have anything? All right, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So what happens then is it goes to the City Council, and we'll try to get something on, could be on next Tuesday already, and usually we have two readings. The first reading on an ordinance is basically to introduce it, and then that way, if there's any additional research that needs to be done, or information that the council would like, they can come back for the next meeting and actually take action. They could waive the rules, typically doesn't happen, but it could happen, where they could actually take action the same night. So, thank you for coming out. And then the next item on here is the proposed ordinance amendment to section six dash two, parent B, of keeping of animals. And other person Jensen, do you wanna speak to this one?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's the exact same verbiage as, as the ordinance that we just passed, and it, it just seems to be redundant to have it in two separate places, where it's really not necessary, so my motion would be to remove this from consideration.
Okay. Just remove the first two sentences in that paragraph?
Remove the first two sentences in there, so, so, well, let me go to it, so I know exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, so where it says, citizens request increase number of chickens, basically, we would remove all of section six dash two, parent B.
Okay. And that's a motion?
That would be my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Some of it's related to rabbits. It's not the whole section, it's only.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
When I, when I look at it, it seems like section six dash two is more inclusive of all animals, birds and bees. And while the chicken portion is redundant.
Yep.
If we strike the whole paragraph, then we lose all the reference to rabbits, dogs, and other.
Yeah, my, I stand corrected, 'cause I'm looking at this, and no, and if you go down and look at the actual.
So just.
Yes, I agree.
So I'm, I'm wondering if, just 'cause I know how people use ordinances, they sometime will go, based on how they search, they may start in here, and if there's no reference to chickens at all, they may wonder, why isn't it covered? Maybe, rather, to avoid redundancy, maybe we just say for chickens C, and then reference the other part of the code, so it's dealt with all in the same place.
That'd be fine with me.
I just think that the, we don't really need.
Yeah, I, I think the verbiage in both places makes sense. I just, I know someone may look here first and say, well, isn't a chicken an animal or a bird, and shouldn't it be covered? So if we could at least just say for chickens, which there's a lot more detail in the, in the other section, just make some sort of reference to C, this other part of the ordinance.
C section, yeah.
So you, you wanna just change your motion then, or?
Yeah, what I, what I do then is, is the first two sentences would be eliminated. They'd be redlined, and then, at the end of the paragraph, you could put in parentheses, for chickens C, six seventy-eight dash two oh six, parent eight, parent Y.
Does that sound good? Is there a second then?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
Okay, so this is, this is still an ordinance change, because they're changing the verbiage in there, so this would still come to council then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if we get the language, the holly, we can talk to.
Oh, yeah.
We have our meeting with Mad on Thursday, so, at one o'clock, if you get it to her by then, we should be able to get on for next week.
She'll have it tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. Item number eight is a proposed ordinance amendment to seventy-eight dash nine sixteen, parent two, parent O, zoning administrator. And that one there, Michael, is, yeah, it's at the end of that ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know why this was ever put in there, but really, that's what a variance is for. That's why people go to the Board of Appeals when they want minor adjustments to, to zoning regulations, so we, we just like to remove it. So I've, I've never granted anybody minor dimensional modifications to anything, so.
Okay.
So, so, as staff.
As staff.
As staff, you'd prefer not to have this in there?
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what the variance procedure's for.
So we have a public hearing on this one too, so any more comments, otherwise we'll go into public hearing. And we'll reopen, or, we're closed for public hearing, we'll reopen for the public hearing. Nobody's here to speak on it, so we'll go back into our regular meeting, and, and, did you wanna make a motion, or do you wanna have a discussion on this one?
Well, I'll, I'll move to strike paragraph O from section seventy-eight dash nine sixteen, parent two, parent O.
Second.
Second. Bartlet, any more discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that one carries. And we'll keep going right down the list. I mean, we're just trying to pick off the low hanging fruit, and, you know, at the next couple meetings, there'll be more, but they'll probably be a little bit more complicated. Number nine is proposed ordinance amendment to section seventy-eight dash five eighteen, residential historic design overlay zoning district. That's a mouthful.
Yeah, yeah, this is kind of an unusual section in the code. We're not really sure why it's in there, 'cause there really are no regulations. It references in, you know, a document that's, that was made in the nineties. That's really more of a recommendation than it is a requirement. And I, I took it to Landmarks Commission, and they were, they were fine with eliminating it, or if, if you decided you wanted to try to modify it, they would assist in that endeavor.
We've been there and done that, I don't think we want to go under there again.
I don't, I don't know why we need it.
Okay. So this one here, we'll, we'll close the regular meeting, reopen, open public hearing, there's nobody here, so we'll go through this routine again, and we'll reopen our regular meeting. Any discussion on this one?
Just one question. So this is the full, what we're, what we see here in our packet, this is the full extent of that section?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, given that that's the full extent of the section, I agree with you, it, it doesn't seem to have a purpose. I would move to eliminate section seventy-eight dash five eighteen from the code.
I'll second.
Second by Jensen. Any further discussion?
Michael, have you looked at, does anywhere else in the code reference this code?
Um, no.
Okay. I looked for that document too, and I couldn't find that document.
I was looking around, and, you know, I even checked through the comp plan to see, you know, how it's referenced there, and there really isn't anything specific, and there are no requirements, so it's really just wasted space.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so the motion is second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of eliminating this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number ten, proposed amendment to the planning and development fee schedule. This one's probably gonna be a little more complicated, but not too bad. What do you have?
Yeah, it was on the agenda last time, and I think there were, just wasn't very many commissioners here, so, yeah, it's just, I don't know if it came through for you guys, you got it in red, where you can see what the changes are?
I'm not in, I didn't print it in red, but anything underlined is.
Yeah.
A change as well.
Yeah, there should be some stricken stuff, so there's just, just a few changes. One was, was when somebody requests a, a zoning letter. That's something that's new, so that would be fifty dollars for that request. And then the downtown design overlay zoning district, now that we have new requirements, we have no fee until now, we wanted to add that fee in here. And then there was just a couple other minor changes, where we haven't been getting, getting enough money for the time we spent on it. If you have any questions, I can.
So it looks like most of these require some staff time, and I think the idea, you know, that we're looking at is, if, if we have to, you know, spend an hour, whether it's doing something with a, a structure, or even at some point, we might be talking about, you know, licensees and, and inspecting chicken coops, or something like that.
I was looking to see if chickens were in here, but.
Not so far. I think that might come from the clerks department.
All under a license, yeah. It goes through the clerk's office, and then I actually do an inspection, and then it goes back to the clerk's office.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
It's approved.
And I know the clerk's reviewing some stuff as well, because we just, you know, some of the fees are dated, and we wanna be able to provide the service and have the, the staff to do so. Go ahead.
It seems like, and I think you might have said this, that the places that you targeted for increase are where you're seeing time in excess of what you've kind of really been receiving fees for, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
I just, I don't know if we've had a chance to do this, are these fees, I mean, they seem reasonable, are they comparable to other communities, in terms of what developers are gonna be expecting when they come in, that?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've checked comparables in the past, and I think we're right in line with.
Even with the increases?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're kind of middle of the pack.
Yeah, the online version has all the red lines, so it's a little easier to see that. Zoning letters, I'm not really sure what, it's just.
Somebody will request a zoning letter, so they'll, they'll wanna know, like, what the zoning is, they wanna know all the information about a property, you know, pass permits, and, and they all, they want it all spelled out in a, in a letter.
That stuff's on our website, isn't it, or?
No.
No, so they have to request it?
So if there's any zoning violations and things like that, they wanna know about it in a letter.
Okay. And then the other one, you mentioned the downtown design overlay zoning reviews.
Yeah.
And the other one was for structural project or demolition requests. So a lot of this has to do with the demolition.
Yeah.
Did somebody have their hand up?
A couple things, item, let's see, number six, the raisings, demolitions of moving structures. You have seventy-five dollars minimum, but isn't it just straight seventy-five dollars?
Seventy-five, yeah.
Do we strike that minimum?
What is that? Oh, okay, there.
Number six.
Oh. Yeah, I wonder why that's minimum. Yeah, that doesn't need to be minimum. Yeah, that could be stricken.
And that erosion control, how did it get, how did it get to beat thousands a cents? Eight thousandths?
That's.
Per square foot, is that?
That mimics the Dane County.
Okay.
That's, that's how they, they charge it, so we, since we contract with them, we try to at least get, recoup some costs. So that's, that's where that came from, the county, county's fees.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? Otherwise, anybody, entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Make a recommendation for approval to the council.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Jensen? Okay, any more discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Number eleven is a proposed ordinance amendment to section ten dash thirty-four, parent B, electrical contractor license. Michael?
Yeah, this is, due to state law changes years ago, we stopped licensing electrical contractors in the city, so we haven't used this for years, so it doesn't make sense to leave it in the code.
Because they're licensed by the state now?
We used to have a local, actually, a local license besides the state license.
Okay.
So we would, yeah, we would charge them a fee every year. It's just a cumbersome thing to try to charge these guys fee, you know, duplicate fees, anyway, so, we, we just like to remove it.
Are there, I suppose I should make sure I can ask questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any other contractors that are charged a local license? I mean, HVAC or anything like that? So this was kind of a unique.
This was unique to electrical, yeah, 'cause they had, they had a separate committee, I think, that, that, yeah, they had a board of electrical examiners also, with the city that, that.
Do we still have that? 'Cause that shows up, like, on our website or somewhere, when I was going through our committees.
Still on some documents, we should scrub, yeah.
Huh?
It's still on some documents, we should scrub.
But that, that was eliminated?
That was eliminated when this was changed.
Okay, we'll let Holly know that, if you wanna let her know that.
Okay, yeah.
She'll take that off of there. There was a couple others that I found that, you know, like the friends of Matt Park and some other ones that haven't been in existence for years, so.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm all for less committee meetings.
When you gotta go to Omaha.
Try to get to most of them. Any other questions or comments on this one? Otherwise, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend approval to council.
All right. And, and the recommendation's just to eliminate this, is that what we're doing?
Yes, amend the ordinance to eliminate.
As presented.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion? This is fun stuff, isn't it? General controversy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that one carries as well. Future agenda items, does anybody have something? Go ahead, Greg.
I'd like to see the Bs come forward as soon as possible. Any word on that, Mike, with the attorney?
He didn't.
The Bs ordinance? I forwarded the email that was floating around today. He's making, he's getting caught up on a lot of the big issues that we had.
Okay.
Obviously, chapter seventy-eight was a big one that we completed, and thirty-four. He worked on the social media one that was pretty time consuming. The bank transition, you know, to, to acquire the bank took a lot of time, so that one is completed now, and the leases that went with it. And then he's been working on some RDA stuff as well. So he's been pretty busy, and I know he's working with Brett on two things, with Public Works, and he's just about complete with them as well, so I think that we're getting dangerously close to having a discussion on this item.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see it done as soon as possible, 'cause it's been probably, well, it's well over a year.
Yeah, it has been, and he'll be the first one to acknowledge that, and it was just a question of priorities and, and, but now, I think we're getting to the point, unless something else comes up, or he should be able to take a stab at this one. Is there, is it, was there an ordinance that we were gonna use floating around?
It was, I believe it was actually, uh.
Matt had one, I think that he would.
You did?
Six dash two.
Okay.
I think it was in there.
All right. So I'll follow up with him, I'll be, like I mentioned earlier, we'll have a conference call on Thursday afternoon, and I'll, I'll, I'll see if he has a timetable for that, so we can communicate that, this group and, and those that, you know, wish to have the conversation, so we would probably have to have a public hearing on that and get it posted anyway, wouldn't we?
I don't think a public hearing's required on that ordinance.
It's not. It'd be a new ordinance, or is it existing?
Six. Just an amendment to chapter six.
Okay. What is the distinction?
Unless, unless Matt wants to put it in the zoning code, I don't know which direction he's going yet.
Okay.
We'll have to talk to Matt.
All right. So, anything else, any other future agenda items? And you'll probably see that we'll have some more of these ordinances.
Already had Bs in the heading, that's just not.
There were some changes in state law that may require us to change some of our zoning codes as well, and some of the ways that we report some things. And we're trying to work with, we, we're members of the Wisconsin Cities and Villages, and with the leagues of municipalities, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work with them, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel on all this stuff. Although some of the specifics might be, you know, unique for Stoughton, but generally, a lot of communities are gonna be going through some of these same law changes as we were. And I know I was at one seminar where we had two different attorneys there, and high-paid attorneys at that, and they didn't even agree on the language that was in the state laws that had changed, and what that really meant. So there's, I'm not really sure, sure some of this stuff is clear as mud on exactly, I think we kind of know the intent, but sometimes the language doesn't, isn't consistent with that. And I know there's already some efforts to repeal some of it, so, you know, I'm not really sure how that's going to go. Some of it's on conditional use permits, which we talked about previously. And then, like I said, there's some on some of the reporting requirements. So I know Rodney, you guys went to seminars on those as well, so.
Definitely got some things, things coming, and we're going to have to do by, I think, twenty twenty.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is, is chip away at some of this other stuff, because we know as soon as the weather warms up again, we'll be getting a lot of requests for, for some work, at least we hope, we're hoping that we are. I would expect that KPW will be coming back with phase two. That was brought here, and then they went to Park and Rec. Park and Rec requested that they move the location of the park. So there's a conceptual drawing going on around right now, and Park and Rec are going to take a look at that tomorrow night. And then if they get their blessing, I would expect to them to bring their updated conceptual plan here. Right now, it's basically kind of a hand drawn thing, and they want to make sure that everybody's good with it before they invest a lot of money and redo that. So I think it's encouraging that, you know, they're, they're listening to the feedback they're receiving from us and Park and Rec, and hopefully we'll get something back here in the next, hopefully next month. So that's the only other one that I can think of off the top of my head, we haven't heard from.
Tillison, we'll have the Tillison request.
Tillison request will be coming. I know that some of the other plans that were approved, the hotel you mentioned, the, the RDA is trying to resurrect the, the marathon site proposal, but I don't know if there'll be any changes in that.
I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, so I don't know if we'll see anything, they'll have to come through here or not on that one, but kind of gives you a flavor that some of the developers are already, you know, getting, making plans for the spring, so hopefully it'll be a busy year.
Mike, has, has anything come forward as far as plans, or, or what, what they're planning to do with the old D and M station?
Oh, I haven't seen a thing.
Okay.
I've seen he had an auction.
Yeah, well, I was, yeah.
Luckily, everything's gone.
Yeah.
Paper said an auto repair store or something, I thought the paper, the hub reported.
He's going to have a.
They just buried the tanks, they didn't take them out.
Oh, they sell cars there, I know that.
They're in self cars.
Did they pull the tanks out?
Yeah, they pulled the tanks.
Tanks are gone, canopy's gone, he's going to have a, a future public hearing, conditional use, coming here. I imagine within a month or two, so.
Yep, so that's all we have, looking for a motion, do a adjourn.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
In the paper, he said the tanks were.
Right here.